November twelfth, um, yes, November twelfth council meeting, Foxfire Village. Let the record show that all council members are present along with members in the audience. Um, opening prayer be offered by Councilman Gilroy.
Got it. Father, thinking of that as always, that we have the right in this country to meet freely and to discuss issues, and we will always be grateful for that. I ask you to give the council wisdom tonight as we move through the agenda. And for our village, Father, I ask you to prosper every resident in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undrawn, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I do have some changes to the agenda.
I do too.
Okay. All right, so I'll do mine last. Councilman.
Oh, me?
Norman.
Uh, just want to add Sunset Drive update and, um, something regarding the trail hunt.
Sunset Drive?
Sunset.
Sunset.
Uh, no fire department update.
No fire department? You're deleting the fire department update. Okay. Anyone else have any changes? Okay, I have on the consent agenda, equal of the, um, all, all of the minutes. So the first three items, four items, those minutes are not available. They will be available by the work session. I mean, by our next work session. And also want to add reference to the budget amendment twenty-four zero, uh, twenty-four dash fifteen. Um, the description on that is septic tank maintenance. On my report, I need to add, uh, the water vehicle budget amendment. And that's it. So can I have a motion to approve?
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approval of the consent agenda? As actually, there's just the budget amendment on it.
I make a motion to accept the budget amendment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on to public comment period. These are comments of, that are, items that are not on the agenda. So if anyone has any questions or comments, now is the time. So most of those? Okay, none being? Thank you. None being had. Um, moving on to the zoning administrator's report.
This was a quiet month. Uh, this report covers from October ninth through today, the twelfth of November. There were two single-family resident applications submitted, one for a house in the ETJ and the other for another one on Portland Circle. Uh, three certificate of zoning compliances were issued for a home on Vista Ridge East, one on Autumn Ridge, and one on Woodland Circle. And other permits issued for one accessory building, one pole barn in the ETJ, three temporary sign permits, and two food trucks. So it was, it was a quiet month for zoning activity.
Thank you. Department reports. We'll start with Councilman Gilroy.
Yes, um, I just did a quick four-month update to show just kind of where we are in this fiscal year. Okay, got it? I did one for the general fund and one for the water fund. There's nothing tough about it. It, it just looks at what we budgeted versus what we've collected for revenue. It would show that right now we collect our revenue at fifty-one percent. Um, in department expenditures, you can also look there and just kind of see where everybody is. I also made a note about the nanny contingency, um, that's left because we've used twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars of it. In every department, there are line items where we're either really close to or way over. Um, it, it's not a concern for the entire department. There are just some line items that just are, not surprising me, but I need to get some more info. So Shannon and I will sit down with each department head individually, just take a few minutes and go, hey, you know what this was? Was it a mistake I made when I put the budget together? Which as a rookie, I mean, I'll, I'll own those. I mean, it wouldn't be surprising. Overall, we're totally fine and every department is totally fine. But we're going to tweak a little bit to just see, so that next year we can go through the project, but the budget process, we're just a little more accurate. And some of the things we have are one-time expenses. So we'll just, we'll just do that over the next month or so. I don't think it's a rush. Okay? And then in the water fund, I did it a little differently. Um, you can see the revenues there are collected, um, at twenty-four percent. Um, tap-ons is the only one that is standing out, and I think that's a reflection of lower buildings. So that might be one we have to look at. Um, and then you can see what's budgeted there. All, all expenses combined, they're at seventeen percent. And then the total actually is fifteen percent, and that's after you add in, uh, the transfer to infrastructure and the transfer to future wealth. So that's all there is to that, and I'll give with each of the individually. And it'll just, and it'll be Shannon and myself and probably the department heads. So we have a better lock on it. Okay?
Great.
Yes, good. All right. And then the audit. Yes, yes, yes. Long live the audit. Well, the best news about the audit was, it was due on October thirty-first and was submitted October twenty-third. Yay. It submits to the local government commission, um, required by state. They reviewed it and approved it without change. So I talked to Jody about it. There is a requirement, um, that the auditor come and make a presentation of the audit in an open meeting. But she said because it was, yeah, it's there. Yeah. Um, but she said because it was reviewed and accepted without change, if we don't want to do that, we don't have to. So I don't know if we have to have the council say, hey, we don't want to do it in an open meeting, um, but she was fine if we didn't do that. And rather than spend the money to bring Ken, the auditor, up here to do a special open meeting, I'm fine if he doesn't present it.
I don't remember us ever doing that.
Why?
It's, if you look at the instructions, it's there. But if we don't need to do it and we're comfortable not doing it, Jody was fine with us not doing it. So. So we won't do it?
I don't, I don't think there's a reason we would do it.
I wouldn't. I mean, but I didn't want to do it.
I think if we have specific questions, once we want to go through it, if we have, if we've got, uh, specific questions, we can always address those.
And I'll just highlight just a couple of things very, very quickly. Um, it is available to the public if you want to read it. God bless you. I would just only go through about page nine because after that.
Normally, normally I get a PDF, so I'll get with Ken.
Okay, and yeah, one, okay. That'd be great. So then just let me tell you that at the close of the current fiscal year, which was FY twenty-three, twenty-four, um, we had an ending governmental fund activity reported fund balance of three million, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That was an increase of five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars and change in comparison with the prior year. In twenty-twenty-four, we also adopted a resolution establishing a fund balance policy that we would maintain thirty-five to forty percent of the budget and general fund expenses, and we are way beyond that. So if you look at everything, the village is in sound financial shape. You need to be grateful for that. Unlike the government, unlike the feds, we can't run red. So if you have any questions, here it is. When Lisa gets the PDF, you can just dive in. Okay?
And maybe you have copies for the council members, right?
Yeah, we got copies. Where'd they go?
They're on the filing cabinet in the room.
Okay, got it. Yes. I'm sure you want to take it home.
Uh, yeah, my meeting tonight.
Yeah, really? And that is all from me.
Any questions for Councilman Gilroy? Okay. Moving on to streets and park, Councilman Norman.
Um, okay, just an update for Sunset Drive. Um, I understand we've had some issues obviously for a few months on that. It's going to be repaired tomorrow. So I would probably recommend people not pulling into Sunset Drive off of Hoffman or trying to exit off, out of Sunset Drive onto Hoffman. Go, go to Woodland Circle. So that'll be fixed tomorrow. Um, real quick, uh, this was handed to me and it's regarding the, the FPOA, the, um, Foxfire Village Thanks and Giving Trail Hunt, which was a really nice idea. Now, they're going to be placing ornaments along the trails. Uh, the only issue that came up regarding this program, and it's a real, I think it's very nice, is there's a statement that says only two-seven-two-eight-one zip code eligible. Unfortunately, we can't enforce that. It is open, it's a, it's a public park. So, um, I'm going to have to assume if someone is walking, these ornaments will be placed in the park trails. Is that the assumption?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if someone other than, someone who lives in two-seven-two-eight-one finds an ornament, they can keep it. And they should be eligible, obviously, for any prizes. Because we, we cannot say it's not open to everybody, unfortunately.
Okay.
Okay? All right, that's it. Um, all right, discussion on pool costs. I, I made these a little bit cleaner to read. Um, and this is a decision we're going to be making tonight. Who, did I give you one? I don't have an extra one.
I don't have one, I don't think.
No, it's coming down.
Good.
No.
Do you want to share?
You go. You need one? I have one. I made copies. I made enough, I guess. All right, so what we're looking at, and you kind of went over this last, uh, at our work session. Do you want me to just go down to the bottom line? Okay, last page. To repair, and I'm just going to highlight the repairs that we're looking at. In the pump room, replacing the existing pump. Uh, equipment room, that's where the pump is. There's repairs in terms of installing the new flow meter, which would meet the requirements for the health department. So there would need to be all-new piping and so on and so forth. Uh, then we come to the pool repairs itself, which is the replacing of the tile, the coping, and the plastering of the pool itself. And then the, replacing the deck. And once we replace the deck, is the time to replace the skimmers, which are broken and cracked. We need a new exhaust fan in the pump room.
Two of them. The other one's dead.
Oh, no, no comments from the audience right now?
No, I, I, I understand what she's saying, and I will, I will address that. The one was working. So we'll look at that.
Maybe it's power.
Okay, we'll look at it. Um, and also, if we're going to do all these, we might as well put the drains in the men's, women's, and the hallway of the bathhouse. So, uh, we're looking at a total in, um, two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. Um, we're going to try and get one permit for all these repairs under one permit.
I have, I have just one question. I don't see it detailed here, but the expansion joint?
That's all the repairs on the, for the pool.
It's, it is, is there?
Right here, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. I'm sorry. Okay, great.
Got it, guys. Um, I don't have the price of the permit. I don't know what that would be right now. The last I heard is like five hundred, but it could be more. And I like Mary's idea of adding ten percent just in case. Um, because first of all, what?
Go ahead, and I have an idea about how to do that.
Okay, um. One of the things, once the health department comes and looks at what we're doing in the pump house, she may have other things that we need to do. Don't know yet. Okay?
So, Jen, are you done? I want to cut you off.
Yeah, go ahead.
This would be my thought. We have sixty-five thousand in reserve for the pool maintenance. So my thought would be, we take this total and do it as one, as a budget amendment.
Right, right.
And then we use what's already there in the pool maintenance reserve as our overage instead of, instead of padding a budget amendment.
Well, okay, but don't, don't forget, we need to hedge back.
That's different.
But we, we, we budgeted, we budgeted for now, yeah.
Yeah, thirty, thirty thousand. You have, is it sixty or sixty-five thousand in pool reserve?
Okay, sixty-five.
Okay, so we may as well just leave that there.
Okay.
And if we have overage, or you're gonna, I'm telling you, I've done too many repair projects. You're gonna have something.
Yeah, yeah, and I figured that.
And then we don't have to do another budget amendment. We just pull it out of what's already there, and it's just clean.
Well, I'll let you handle all that since you're.
Well, I just need to be sure you guys are all right with that.
So we're going to do a budget amendment for the entire three hundred thousand?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-three.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-three plus the ten percent.
Do you want to add in for the permit?
We have a hundred-and-thirteen thousand.
You know what? Why, just be on the safe side. Why don't we say a thousand dollars for the permit? I don't know how much it's going to cost right now.
Make it two-eighty-four.
Yeah.
If we have.
How about two-eighty-three-five?
Do it.
All right, so, do I hear?
Two-eighty-six, no.
No, two-eighty-three-five?
Yeah, so that we, that would easily cover the permit.
Okay.
Mary, the funding of the pool, if, if we have the sixty-five thousand in a pool reserve, why wouldn't we not use that? We have another contingency of a hundred-and-thirteen thousand. And then we also have a capital reserve of one-fifty. Why wouldn't we pull out of those three?
I'll tell you exactly why. Because when we decided to do this, we all agreed that we would take these repairs out of the general fund. And I don't want us, I mean, me, just as me, I don't want us to take up all of our contingency funds only four months into the year.
Right.
Because there is stuff, stuff just happens. And it's cleaner, Warren, to me, it's cleaner to do one budget amendment for the entire amount, and then you have that pool reserve maintenance for exactly that.
So.
Well, and the, and the capital reserve was kind of meant for other cap, actual capital.
And this is not a capital project.
This is a repair and maintenance project.
So the revenues we're going to bring in?
There are no revenues. Our tax dollars.
Our tax dollars we're bringing in.
Right.
So we're going to add three hundred thousand to the pool, right, to the budget.
Well, we have, we have a basically a fund, it's a fund allowance, actually.
It's like taking it out of, if you look at savings, yeah, it's like taking it out of our savings account.
Right.
Yeah.
Because the contingency, see, our tax dollars, and we reserved, and then we had a hundred, a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five in contingency. So that was leftover of our tax revenue for the year. Okay, for the year. But we've got three billion in our savings. So we're basically going to be taking this two-eighty-two out of our fund, our fund balance, basically.
To me, it's the cleanest way to do it. Make one budget amendment, use what's in reserve for overage, and then we're not doing budget amendments every other week.
Okay.
And then as we need other repairs in the future, we still have our reserve.
Right, and we can always refund the reserve when we go into twenty-four, when we go into twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
No, we're in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Or twenty-five, twenty-six, oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, that's scary.
Okay, scary.
So we got two-eighty-three-five, right, on the budget amendment?
Yes. So, the question is, unless you have some questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve these repairs and approve a budget amendment for two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-five-hundred for the repair and upgrade, well, basically repair of the structure and the pool.
Can I ask a question before we do that? Who's writing the contract for this?
Who's writing it?
Well, there has to be some kind of various, there has to be a contract that lays out exactly what they're going to do. I think we need a performance guarantee.
Okay, now, when you say performance review, and I, here's the problem, guys.
I said performance guarantee.
Okay, but here's the problem. They, we know the pool needs to be open May thirty-first, okay? A lot of these repairs will be dependent on the weather. So I cannot say to them, you must have this pool and all these repairs done by May first. We may run a little over, who knows? Because of the fact that the pump room, not a problem. Weather, it's not weather-dependent. The repairs in the pool, pool house, not weather-dependent. The pool itself and the deck is very weather-dependent. My goal is to have the deck removed in December. Now, depending on the weather in January and February is when we would start the pool repairs and the pump and so on and so forth. But keep in mind, it's all dependent on the weather. So once those repairs are done in the pool itself and the pump house, then we have to replace the deck, which needs to be done before the beginning of April. Because they do not want the pine straw and the pine pollen on the new deck and the cement. So it's got to be solid.
It's not so much about that as it is just about a performance guarantee that the contractor will do all the work.
Do all the work.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, but see, it really hasn't, I mean, if they, if there's a weather issue, that doesn't, to me, really affect the performance guarantee. We just need to have some kind of guarantee that the contractor will complete all the work. That's really what a performance guarantee is.
Okay.
So who's, are they putting together the contract? Are we putting?
We can put something together.
Well, we have to have some, I think the mayor's got to sign. We had to do a contract for the well, and I would think that we would do a contract for the pool repairs, unless.
I would think that it's, it is detailed out in this spreadsheet, and this is the line items that would be on the purchase order that we provide to our contractor.
Correct.
And our con, and our contractor.
And there's a lot more detail that I didn't put on there.
And, and again, I think there's something too that I think people have to keep in mind is that other, other than like the drains and the, and the decking, these are all things that we have done in the past as routine maintenance items, yeah, for the years. So it's not like we're doing anything we haven't really done before. We are just doing, we're just doing them all at once.
Right.
So, yes, I think it does all have to be written out in a purchase order and, um.
Who's the purchase order team?
It's, I'm.
Well, I'm going with, um, Southern Pines Pool. Because they were the lowest.
Where in the other?
Southern Pines.
What'd you call it? I didn't hear what you said. Must have been Southern Lions.
I know, I always be. And what's nice is Southern Pines Pool is going to be the project manager. So they're taking over, making sure everything gets done. And, and meeting with the health department, making sure the project moves along. And we really do need a project manager who understands pools. I'm not the expert. So we have a project manager at this point, and I will be in constant contact with him.
I asked Jody, just on the off chance that the weather really is a pain in the butt. She said the only way we'd have to make this a capital project is if the repairs were not completed in this fiscal year.
Oh, it won't have to be done.
Yeah. Otherwise, we'd be in a lot of.
Let's just put it this way. It will be done. Now, these aren't outrageous repairs, okay? They're.
The biggest one is the deck, the deck removal and the, and.
But other than that, these are repairs they've done.
Right.
So it, it's not an ongoing, we're not, we can't do it project.
Just, did you get started?
Yeah, and I need to have an answer tonight because, um, I was speaking to somebody and they said, if we don't get on schedule now, we probably will not be on a schedule. What's happened is a lot of these companies were so understaffed that they were way behind in the jobs that they were doing. So.
Did you have a motion on the floor?
I did, yep.
I want a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Well, I will get working on this then tomorrow.
Motion passes. Budget amendment approved. Thank you, Janet. That's a lot of work.
Oh, I'm still in the meeting now. Okay, um, we talked about ordinances last, at our work session. And did anybody ever talk to the police chief as to whether or not we had anything to measure excessive noise? I just wanted to ask that question before.
I, I did, and the police chief does not have a, um, a way to measure decibels. So that is not something, that's not equipment that they have right now.
Okay. Um, so let's just go through these one more time, and we've already decided we wanted to add the park hours. Uh, we already decided no overnight parking. Um, we already talked about the walking trails, taking out small for the bicycles, uh, parking, um, do we need to add that in there? Is it, I know we all said yes, but do we?
But wasn't that a copy?
Does everybody have a copy of what we titled up?
No, I don't.
Here.
It's from our last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I might have an extra one.
You want to read off the line?
Here, 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 here. I got an extra one.
No, give me that.
We'll share it, huh?
I think I got mine as well. I got a good one, I mean.
You got yours? Um, do, do we really need to add, uh, parking in designated parking spots only?
I don't know. Do we ever have issues?
Not really.
Well, yeah, we do.
When?
Trunk or Street, they were parked down the driveway, down the road. I mean.
Yeah, well, that's, that's not, that's a one-time deal. Um, and, and there were a lot of people, so.
Well, I, I would say designated parking, I, I don't know why that, you can't leave that there. I don't think there's anything wrong.
But do we need to leave it as an ordinance?
Why not?
Okay. Okay.
Because except for special events, and that's when we would have it anyway.
Oh, permitted events, okay. Um, I'm going to say special, no, I don't want to say permitted.
Just say except for some, um.
I need a different word for that. I'll think about that.
Okay.
Let's move on. Um, we left off animals, noise.
Wait, 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 can we go back to alcohol?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to come back to that, maybe at the end.
Okay.
Uh, we weren't going to add anything about the animals as, uh, excessive noise. Again, I think it, it's really kind of, if everybody in the neighborhood around, uh, the park can hear what's going on there, I think that's excessive. And the police can pretty much come in and say, hey, turn it down.
Well, we have, we have noise ordinances as it is.
Yes.
That are enforced, and I think it's probably worded very similar to this.
Right, so.
So at this point, I think.
I think we leave it in.
Yeah.
And, I mean, because that was the debate, leave it in or take it out. All right, so we're going to leave that in. Um, obviously, we want to have the no weapons in as a ordinance. All right, so let's go back to alcohol. Uh, Warren, I know this was something you researched for us. We also spoke to the attorney for the village, and it was indicated by the attorney that we should not allow alcohol in the park because of the liability. And I think we need to follow what our village attorney is instructing.
I agree. I think alcohol should not be permitted. Um, that, and that's just it.
And the orders.
No, just no, there should be no leeway on that. It's, you know, alcohol's not permitted. It's not permitted on any village, other village property, and it's also not allowed on state property or town property anywhere in the area. Um, so, and of cour, you know, I am not going to act against attorney, counsel, or council's opinion. I think that's, uh, dangerous for us to do.
Well, and it was brought up too, is it? I mean, even if we had a special permit, it does not negate the fact that this village could be sued at any time. It does not negate the fact that the council members could be sued.
It just should be, it's not permitted at any time, and that's all there is to it. It would be different if there was a restaurant in town and the restaurant wanted to serve alcohol on their property. They can do whatever they want. But as far as serving alcohol on town property and the town sanctioning that is, is not what we should do.
Yeah.
Under any circumstances. That's my opinion.
What were you going to say?
And legal opinion.
So we need to amend the current ordinance because there's a paragraph in there about permit.
And we don't even have a permit.
So, and that needs to be taken out.
That whole, that whole ordinance, the special event ordinance, really should be, it needs to be rewritten because. because it's, it's, doesn't apply to Foxfire Village. So, it really needs to be.
Deleted and, and.
And redone.
Okay. Do we work on that? Can I work on that with you?
Well, that's zoning.
Zoning?
We've got public care coming in December, so.
Okay. Do that? All right.
To delete it.
So, I think we're all in agreement, no alcohol, alcohol is not allowed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it, it really is a big liability.
It's not the times.
All right, so that was number one, we'll work on that. And then the other additional ordinance change was section seventeen dash eighty-two, number two. To change, the ordinance reads, change the period from twenty-four hours immediately before and after travel.
Oh, wait, you're switching, let's.
Yeah, I switched, I'm sorry, do we have to stop and do that?
This is, this is an ordinance that we want to put in place.
That's the village code, that's, no public care.
But we, but we need to vote on accepting this.
For that one, for the park?
The park rules, the village green.
Park rules.
Yeah, now, if you're gonna vote on the whole ordinance, it needs to be drafted up.
Okay.
Oh, so we can't vote on it right now?
We, it really needs to be drafted in.
And then, and then, okay. Okay.
So, you will make these changes and then, okay.
Yeah.
All right, now moving, now we're switching.
Okay, thanks. I was way ahead of you. Switching, changing seventeen dash eighty-two, number two. Change from a period of twenty-four hours prior, before, and after travel to three days prior and three days after travel.
I really don't have a problem with that. I mean, I, I know that depending on how long you're gonna be using, going away for, it can take some time.
Well, what's so funny about this ordinance is that literally you can have someone staying in your camper or travel trailer for ten days on your property.
That seems a little excessive, but I'm, I'm just.
Not if they drive from a long ways.
Right. So, are we okay with changing that, making that change?
I have no problem.
Yes, ma'am?
Oh, no, no, I'm so sorry, I was just gonna say, I can, on the ordinance amendment, with everything else for the park, that could be another section, and then make that change.
Okay, would you do that?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
All right, do you want me to give you the wording?
Yeah, and then when it's prepared, we all vote on that, and then, and then.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank God we have the expert here. That was all I had then, unless anybody else has any questions.
Any questions for Janet? Everyone's done, okay?
Okay, next.
Moving on to the water department.
All right. First item is the proposed increase in water rates. And their rate structure is conservation-based. And spent the afternoon discussing rates. So, I'm ready to, at this time, make a motion that. The effective January first, institute a water rate increase.
Okay, just for the benefit of the people who were not at the work session. Basically, the flat rate currently for usage under, well, under thirty-five hundred gallons a month, it's now twenty-two dollars, that's going to increase to twenty-four dollars. And then all the other rates are increasing by ten percent?
First two steps were ten percent, the next two steps, twenty percent, the last two steps, thirty percent. And the reason to do it, base it like that, is that it'll create conservation. And the other thing is that it'll offset the revenues we could possibly lose by having people conserve.
Right. And, and I think, didn't we discuss that these rates haven't gone up since when, two thousand?
The last time I saw it was two, the effective date was two thousand fourteen. I wasn't able to confirm.
Well, actually, two thousand fourteen, it went down. It went down in two thousand fourteen.
My base rate has been twenty-two, and I've been here for fourteen years.
I don't know if we've ever lowered it.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, for the higher wages.
Steve Jordan was here, he lowered, he lowered the higher rates down.
Okay, I'll knows.
And I've been here since two thousand eight, it's been twenty-two dollars since I've been here.
Well, I, I, through my research, I can confirm that, Don, but I don't think it's a issue.
Right, no, it isn't. And, and I think people need to understand that, you know, all of our costs have gone up significantly in the last ten years, exponentially, not by ten percent, probably by sixty or seventy percent to operate as far as replacing parts and all of that. So, I guess we need a motion to approve this rate, these rate changes.
Effective January one?
Yes.
Effective January first.
I make a motion.
Oh, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, passes.
Does that mess up the water going if we do it January first? No, I guess it doesn't, it'll just be the next grade.
Okay. Next item on the agenda for the water department, the new will thirteen and update. We did talk to the contractor this morning, had a meeting with the project engineer. They have fallen behind. As of the end of September, they were to produce plans and specifications and have them submitted to the state. Well, we're about seventy percent done with that, with that task. So, not real pleased with it. Not much we can do. The proposal, the contract that we had entered into, there was no stipulation for completion dates on it. So, that's what we, we have to look with right now. We did, the project engineer said he would cooperate, all their projects have been delayed. I guess they're doing, probably, I'm assuming, I shouldn't say this, they're probably doing work on the western part of the state. But the next task was the public water supply engineers report. And that was to be submitted at the end of this month. And they feel that that's gonna be about two or three weeks out now. And the approval construct that we'll get from the state, that was supposed to be in our hands by January thirty-first. That's still a possibility, but it's, it's not definite. Completion will now be sometime in February, possibly March. They're aware that we run their water restrictions starting in late May, first of June. And we stressed to them that, we were told it was a nine-month project, it's now prepped to, we started, we signed the contract on January first of last year. So, it's now turned into a seventeen-month project, eighteen-month project. I'm not pleased.
Do we have to wait quite a few months to get test results back?
Part it was, the lab in Florida, that took a while to get the test results back, but.
I mean, I thought that was kind of a couple of months, wasn't it?
Right. But that's where we stand. But they did say if they can move it up, that they, they, they'll do what they can. But like I said, it's, just thinking in the future, when we enter contracts, we need to be a little more stew.
I think though, one thing you have to remember though, is you put those clauses in the contract. And you're, number one, your prices automatically.
Prices go up.
Escalate, that's the first thing. And there's always gonna be a clause of, you know, if something happens and, you know, force majeure, right? So, it's, trouble is, is that, number one, there is the catastrophe. This is a small project in their scope of unsure projects that they do. So, it's.
Well, on a good note, it started out as, kind of a, in my opinion, started out as a kind of a sour meeting. At the end, the project engineer did assure me that he would do everything good to expedite it.
So, how often do we need to meet with the project engineer to help this?
Well, we'd call him just about every two or three weeks. And we thought we were pretty much on schedule for a while there.
Now, does he say what the holdup is?
No, they're just, they, they're all on the jobs. And we have, we, we're a small village, and so we're.
Oh, I know.
We're small, we're small meetings compared to, you know.
Small little well.
Everybody, you know, what you went through Janet, what everybody goes through trying to find contractors. But yes, it's, it'll get done, and hopefully it's up and running before, before the summertime demand hits.
Okay.
And he will be out. Another project that we're looking at, and that's the rehab of number six. And he will be out, he's gonna be out this afternoon, but he'll be out Thursday. And he has assured me that they'll do the necessary steps to test pump that well. And hopefully, both projects move at the same time, construction of both projects. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Morgan? All right, moving on to public safety, Mr. Mills.
Okay, police department, chief. Say your piece.
I had my piece done. How's everybody this afternoon?
We're all nice.
Good deal. Just kinda started everything off. I wanted to thank everybody in this room, all of our citizens and everything. We finalized all of our donations for our western part of the drive. We went, we had it going on for about a month or so, you would take, we made three large supply drops throughout the time. So, again, big thank you to our citizens at FPL General Store and the golf course. Everybody kinda come together, and it was a big, 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 big turnout for us. So, again, huge thank you to everybody for that and your support. One other issue, issue we had going on, or I should say, essentially, issue currently, but we've been getting a large influx of folks driving golf carts on main roads, both the Hoffman or Richmond. The way it's kinda set up is if you have to cross the road for whatever purpose, wherever, we're fine with folks doing that. That straight across, of course, not into traffic, but, but again, riding down the center of the road and whatnot, it becomes an issue because if you don't have a properly eliminated, you know, vehicle or whatever it may be, somebody could strike it, and next thing you know, we're having to deal with a whole lot more problems. So, that's something I would like to address, and I instructed staff, like, look, kinda notify folks if that, that you may see, if that's the case, kinda give a little bit of leeway. Hey, here's this, you know, move to the shoulder, so on and so forth. If they're not taking that, that friendly reminder to that, then we're gonna go ahead and start issuing out paperwork. Because it is considered a road move on roadway. On town streets, of course, you know, as we all know, we're good. But again, our main roads that the state owns apparently, we're not good with that. So, just again, a friendly reminder for that. We've had a, a kinda busy month this past month and month of October. Obviously, we had some, some, some public community events went all over the park. We had a great turnout as far as our, our trunk retreat and everything. We also had our fall safety jamboree over there with FPL, was a pretty good turnout there. Hopefully, we'll get it worked out next year, try to keep something like that going. As far as some of our stats and whatnot, I've given everybody a stat sheet for the month. This total month, they had about fourteen hundred events, fourteen twenty-seven to be exact. And that's everything across the board from, you know, admin stuff to animal calls, all the way down to traffic stops, welfare checks, take a bit of jail. So, like, fourteen hundred twenty-seven to be exact, last year at this time, we were at seven hundred.
Wow.
So.
Lot more crime?
And, and like I said, and I will say, my hats off to all the staff. I mean, everybody's been out there being active, beating the bushes, trying to make sure everybody's following in line and again, not doing any bad things around here, so that's a good thing. For the, I'll also give you a cumulative total for the year. Cumulative total I've written in at the bottom was eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen.
It was in the box, it was, oh, I missed it, okay, sorry, sorry.
Like I said, eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen calls for the year, or activities for the year for us. Last year, we did ten thousand total, month, twelve months for all of us. So, being that we're down pretty much two to three officers for better part of a quarter, if not the four months, I mean, we're on par to do some pretty good numbers this year as far as, so our activities are going up. The guys have been busy, and like I said, we are thankful for that. But, so, actually, that's where our tax dollars are going to. See what we get next year.
I, I have.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
When you have patrol here. Now, what is, what is patrol exactly?
So, if we're doing a patrol, for example, say, I'm gonna use Caleb because he's sitting in the room, Caleb, whatever, everybody. So, essentially, like I said, if we're doing a patrol, if, if you're seeing him riding through the neighborhood, being seen, you know, stopping, checking on so on and so forth, you know, again, just riding through, that's a patrol.
Okay.
So, if you remove one end of the village, check on all the side streets and everything, that's what we're classifying as a patrol. Go ahead.
That's, and then premises check, is that people who have asked you to check their premises while they're on the way?
Yes. So, at one point, if you look back at there, you'll see it has well site check on here as well. So, I lumped some of that stuff together for the fact of, because that's still a premise check. It's a town premise, but again, it's still a premise check. So, anytime we do store checks, like, for example, if the store's closed at night, and it's, you know, we will walk around or whatever, homes, we, we get a ton of those. Again, our well sites, various things, our, the golf course, sometimes we get out, patrol around those, make sure everything's good over there. We do all that.
Okay, can I, can I just interject something? So, we had a house check in while we were gone. And I just have to compliment Caleb, our side garage door was unlocked. And Caleb, I think you texted me, if I recall, went in the house, and I instructed them to do that and checked the whole house for me. So, they are doing what we asked them to do. So, nothing had happened, but the door was unlocked, Caleb took care of it for me. And so, I just wanna tell people, going on vacation, fill out those sheets.
Yep, and you can email them to any of us, and like I said, we will get them. They're disseminated to everybody, that way we all have it. If you're out about, check on us, so on. Just to touch base on what you're saying about your door being open and us checking it. And again, I'm trying to use any place, but if we, if we come across any open door in a house, we're gonna go ahead and clear the residence. We're gonna knock and announce, hey, you know, Foxfire Police, so on and so forth. If you're in here, make yourself known, that sort of thing, several times to get it across because we don't know if somebody were, were happening to break in, could possibly still be in there. So, we will check it no matter what, if we find an open door.
Well, the other thing too.
We run into issues with, with folks saying, well, I don't want you in my house. Well, again, I hate to give very bad news, but bad people go in their house sometimes whenever. So, we're not there for any other purpose, I'm just making sure there's no, no looking back.
And I just have to say, we have a friend who did go out, and they had a light on in their house. And Caleb actually called and said, are you home?
Right.
And they said, no, and he said, well, there's a light on in your house. And she did inform him, inform him that they had a timer. So, I mean, that's how astute he was and conscientious about the house check, so.
Exactly, right. And that's what we're on here for, you know, like I said, that's, that's what we're gonna do, and we'll continue to do that till, hopefully, the end of time. Like I said, we've had, again, various things, we've gotten one DWI this past month. We've had four drug arrests, five warrants, or OFAs, or whatever. So, we've had various citations for drug offenses as well as traffic stuff. Again, you've got all the numbers right there in front of us, I think. Let's see, for our traffic stops, let me just look it up here. Traffic stops, we've had a hundred and eleven traffic stops for the month, and we issued out a hundred and ninety. Traffic stops, we've had a hundred and eleven traffic stops for the month, and we issued out a hundred and ninety-two citations. So been pretty busy, just trying to get, you know, people to come through here, slow down and follow in line. The last thing I wanted to touch on real quick was, I know that was something that's discussed about me going to a management development program. That has actually been canceled. So I applied myself to Don Seton a couple of months back, filled out all the application, resumes, essays and everything and the sort. And they needed a certain number of threshold to meet, to make class and for short. So we weren't able to get that done. I'm currently looking into other options as I was requested. There are a few more options out there, I'm just trying to figure out what's, what was the best avenue for myself as well as the village. So currently, that's what we're working with, nothing more than that. Questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Fire update, nothing?
No, we took it off the. Okay.
Mayor's report.
Mayor's report. I've got, we did some research on a new vehicle. We did vote at our last meeting that we were going to go ahead with the F-150 pickup truck. What I'd like to do is, we do have to vote on a budget amendment. We budgeted twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars and we need a budget amendment of fifteen thousand to purchase the truck as well as a cap, the back of the truck, which is outfitted as Jesse would need it for, for his, his job, right, and all the parts that he carries and everything. What I would like to do is make a motion that we accept budget amendment twenty-four dash sixteen for fifteen thousand dollars for the new F-150 truck.
And make a motion.
Second, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposition, this passes.
What was the total now?
The total of the vehicle is thirty-seven thousand four eighty-eight sixty-four. Now, we will be getting one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents back from sales tax. But we still have to pay the sales tax. So it's basically thirty-six, three.
That doesn't, but that doesn't include the box?
Oh, the ca, I have two thousand dollars in here for a cap.
So what's the total amount of the budget amendment?
The total amount of the budget amendment would be fifteen thousand dollars.
I have another thing when you're done with this.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm gonna put some signings on that truck, something.
Well, I kinda have that in there too, like a little deep, a deep, kind of a decal on the doors for the water department. I was thinking, depending on the cost that I'd love to do, I, just a decal like the Foxfire logo just says Foxfire Water Department, so people know.
We have the magnetic ones already.
Yeah, I think, I think it's an aluminum body.
Oh, wow.
So that's not gonna work. It's gotta be a wrap on the door. Okay.
I screwed up. Are you, are you done with that?
Yes, I believe I am done with my, for now, yes.
I didn't realize I had to include all the sales tax on my numbers. Because I, I thought we just got it back, I didn't realize that we had it included in me.
Okay.
You need those now?
Well, it's.
Sales tax on.
The sales tax on.
Services.
Yeah.
Yes.
You want me to add those up for you?
Well, it's a percentage, right?
I, I got them, I got them here, right, yeah. Okay, so one is seventeen fifty.
Hold on.
My bad.
Okay, you, you, okay, so it's seventeen thousand five?
No, no, one thousand seven hundred fifty.
All right.
One is seven hundred and seventy. And one is one thousand three hundred and thirty. And then the other one, you got it? You got those? And the last one is ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. That's just sales tax.
Ten thousand what?
Nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Eighteen, fourteen, eight, thirty?
Yeah.
So we need to add that into.
We need, so we need to amend, we need to amend.
What did you get, fourteen what?
Eight thirty, basically.
So we got fourteen, eight, thirty for tax, plus two eighty-three, five?
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Which we will get back, but we have to pay.
That's why I didn't include it. Which, you know, why does the state do that?
They actually tried to pass a bill that we wouldn't, we could be considered a.
Exempt. And not have paid to begin with.
New total, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and thirty.
Yeah, let me go back. Two hundred what?
Two hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and thirty.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
So.
But you're gonna do it, Sandra, stand off.
Yeah, let's amend that budget amendment proposal. I'll make a motion that we update the pool repair budget amendment to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
Yep. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Well, I'm glad that came up.
No, being that passes. Okay, we're now moving on to new business. And I have one item in new business. And that is, I'd like to float the idea of a accessory building to the administrative offices, which would be located somewhere around the perimeter of the parking lot. Basically for storage of things that could very easily go in a storage building. Police department cones, signs, signage. There's some grills that they use that need to be really stored inside. As well as anything else that we may have that could be moved into a storage facility. But I'd like to, you know, I'd like to float that idea and see what you guys think about that.
How big are we talking?
Um, I don't know, I guess.
Have to check your ordinance.
I can put it on the side over here.
Well, we thought that it wouldn't be good over there, basically because if we ever wanted to further development, then we'd then have to move it. But there's a pretty good spot, it's right, right on the opposite of the police department.
How about if we put it in the fire building? We own the building, right?
And I think it has to be designated for their equipment and everything.
Yeah, I would say we would.
We won't leave the fire department alone.
How about to?
The grass area right?
Right, that's where I'm talking about. Like, you know where the, all the bushes are, it's like an overgrowth right over there. But on the other side, it's pretty flat right there by the old flagpole. It's pretty flat. And there's a life out there as well.
Well, I was thinking the corner over here. You know where you're parked.
Yeah, that's kinda down, has a pretty much a downward slope.
So as you drive down Hoffman, you're gonna look to the right and you're gonna see the.
No, because it's behind the police department.
Oh, behind, okay, got it.
It's like, like parallel.
Make sure you can't watch it.
Where the, that phone, windstraining, this building is.
Whatever that, I didn't even know there was a building back there. Yeah.
But right, right, that area.
Yeah, right in front of that, kind of, where it's, there's a whole bunch of under, vines growing there, yeah. But we could, you know, maybe clear that out a little bit and then have it there.
So how big?
Uh, we, I don't know, I think we'd have to just look at what we might wanna store there. Probably twelve by.
On our twelve by sixteen.
No.
Are we under the, based my question, are we under the same code that our residents are?
Sure, for impervious surface? Yeah.
For accessory buildings, is it based on the score?
For municipal property.
Right.
But we need to not do anything radically wrong with an accessory building and we're gonna eat it.
Well, I, I'm assuming it's gonna be, you know.
We're gonna have a concrete slab if we go over twelve by twelve.
Yeah, and if it's twelve, if it's over twelve feet, it has to be concrete slab, but in any one direction. And, I mean, it could be, but I don't think we need anything that large. But I guess, what I'd like to do.
If you start putting police equipment in there, plus all the buildings, and it's gotta last us years, that? Five years, six years, they still get told, 'cause I got a twelve, ten by twelve.
Jesse's got meters and things all show in his office that he can be able to use that building for.
Yeah, his room, his office.
So I think it's a matter of seeing what we would be storing there. It just seems that there's, there's stuff around that I think would look better if it wasn't outside.
Yes.
And I know we've got things stored inside that is really taking up valuable space. So I was just floating the idea, I mean, I can see what, how much space we need. So who's got what to store.
That is a good idea.
Yeah, and then when you buy an accessory building, it doesn't come shelved out, I don't have one, on the inside, does it? Because I would think if.
Yeah, you can get a shelf, they'll do stuff.
You can.
Yeah, because I would think, if it was me, I would divide it into portions. And so all the police stuff is one thing, all the water stuff and all the admin stuff. So it's very clear what's where and it doesn't, I mean, like if you go in your, yeah, if you go in your garage and you wanna throw up, we don't want the accessory building to look like that.
Well, and I think, I think the other thing, the other option could be storage racks, you know?
Yeah, something so it's just delineated and, and there's never any question about, hey, where did my meters go? Or, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Good idea.
All right, I will, I'll pursue some options and I will get some pricing and move on with that. Options, sizes, okay. That's that for new business. Now, old business. There was a discussion, and we talked about it in our work session as well, as far as couple meeting times. And our work session, I think that is not in, that's not being discussed for change and that's gonna be still remain at four thirty. Council meeting times, I'm just gonna ask the council if they have any ideas on that.
Somebody suggested we do a trial for six months at six thirty.
We start next November.
Started in January. I think six thirty is really late, personally.
I do too.
That's my bedtime.
Well, here's the problem, look how long that our work session went.
But we're not talking about.
I, I understand that, but some of these meetings can go long. And I'm sorry, you're talking, even if it's two hours, it's eight o'clock. And that's just me, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
Well, then let's at least back, back it up to five thirty. And to, I mean, I don't know. I personally think we need to give it a run because it comes up and we haven't, we haven't done it since like twenty eighteen.
Well, since I've been here, first it was seven P M., we never got people here at six P M., we didn't get anybody here at four thirty. We always got busy and if it's important, people show up. And that's how it's been always, I mean, I'm just, that's just what I know.
We haven't tried it for six years.
And then if we're, if we're doing this back and forth, that, that's just really, because these are regular called meetings. I mean, you can do it, but it's public notice and there's a lot of changes to be made, so. I mean, if we're gonna do it, I mean, it needs to be set.
Right.
And not a witch law, you know, just a trial. But it's just.
Mary, the only problem I have is, as a volunteer, I make a commitment to be here right now at four thirty. You know, if, if there's something on the agenda that a resident is interested in and serious about, I would think of trying to make that commitment, be there at, at four thirty. So I'm, I'm in favor of leaving it right where it is right now.
Okay, all right, let me, let me propose three options, okay? We have leaving it at four thirty, moving it to five, or five thirty. I think, I think five thirty is really the latest that, that I would wanna go. If somebody, we could add six, Mary, you, you want to offer six thirty?
You don't have to put six thirty on there, but this is how I look at it. I was elected to serve and if our residents think that it would serve them better to do it, you know, at five or five thirty, when more people can come, then I'm up for doing that. But it's a council vote, I mean, we don't have to do it at six thirty. I mean, we used to do planning and zoning meetings at three and we moved them to five thirty. So. It's, we need to make a vote as a council. I would support five or five thirty. And if that doesn't mean, I'm not gonna make a big deal out of it, I just think when people bring it up, that, you know, that's a concern. And I think when it came up, you know, the county commissioners do one at two thirty in the morning and they do it one at five thirty in the afternoon. And I think most municipalities do them later than four thirty. But that's up to us as a council.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to keep it at four thirty.
It's second.
Do we continue a motion for that?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
So there's a motion standing to keep the meeting at four thirty.
It's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's three in favor. So Councilman Nelson, Morgan and Norman was in favor of four thirty. So I guess the only other, I guess there isn't any other options if you all decide. Four thirty, it stays. Okay. I'm not opposed to, oh, I should, I should, I guess I should say, is anyone opposed to that, the four thirty?
Really?
No?
Well, I'm not gonna argue, but I mean, we already voted, we're done.
Yep.
But are we still, we would still be the A or the A?
Yeah.
From either.
A.
Um, I'll vote in favor of keeping it at four thirty, only 'cause I would probably only vote five, five thirty anyways. All right, well, council has, majority of council sticks with four thirty. Okay, the land use plan, we had some final, I thought I made some final updates to the land use plan. But Mary, we had some things that you said were not changed.
Yeah. If you look, I mean, some of the notes that are in there were notes that I put in like a year ago, just before I came on the council. And so we can get those resolved before the public hearing, I don't think it's a big deal. But when it goes to public hearing, it doesn't need to have like.
I thought, when I printed this, or when I gave this to Lisa.
That was from your email.
There were no, there were no notes in it, right?
No, it was on there, there was, it still shows up, it just had to be accepted.
But I didn't, yeah, remember I said, I, you, I thought you said you were gonna. I thought we went through all these, I thought the changes that I made were the changes we discussed. In regard, 'cause I don't know how to delete the notes or accept the notes or whatever.
You need to click that we accept button.
I wasn't even looking at the notes, I was only looking at what I had written in my comments when we went through it.
Like if you go to one point two. Definition, definition usage and standing of the plan. If you looked at one sixty D, it says it has to be presented, you know, like a public hearing. And it is, I don't know that it's non-binding, I mean, if you make a change, if you adopt something that's in, that is in opposition to your land use plan, in effect, you can do it, but you now changed the land use plan. They went through that at the county. So I don't know if, if we just, I'm not quite sure what we wanna do with some of that stuff. And then the, however, at least the, however we do the paging, needs to be adjusted in the table of contents.
Oh, it will, it will.
All right, okay.
Form added, yes.
Okay.
So, so in one dot two, is that, are we gonna delete that? What's, what's your point there?
She's saying it needs to be rewarded.
I did, yeah.
Rewarded.
That maybe that the land use plan is accepted, you know, to public hearing or something like that. I mean, or we can, I mean, we can take it out, it doesn't, I just think it's, the land use plan to me was a little more serious than I originally thought. I'm not trying to mention.
Oh, so this just needs to be deleted. We just wanna leave it saying. We just wanna leave it saying that this is the official's declaration, the L U P is the village's official declaration.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'll just delete that. Then what else?
Well, if you keep scrolling, what else do we have in there?
Uh, let's see.
Oh, the population growth has grown significantly?
The popu- has grown significantly, I can just change that.
I'll, I'll do it since I've got the other document.
Right.
So instead of saying exploded?
Yeah.
The current population is fourteen forty-four, we know that's good, right?
That's true, yep.
Okay, um, I don't, the projected population thing in the properties, I asked Tasha to relook at it 'cause she did it off of G I S last time. And I think we do need to account for the residential multifamily property that is now the site of the new well. Because we had included that in there.
Well, that's why I said approximate, I think I changed it, or it was changed to approximately.
Okay.
And then I based my math, 'cause her math was a little, her, the other lines that were in there were pretty messed up. But anyway, I said on twenty-five homes per year, we would, our population in twenty thirty would be eighteen, nineteen if we got twenty-five homes per year between now, from, you know, now and six years from now. I just did the math on that.
Well, you know what, Janet, maybe what I did was I got confused when I looked at this, 'cause my notes were all still in there.
Okay.
And that made me think maybe we hadn't done it.
Okay.
So maybe what needs to happen is we just pull the notes out.
Yeah, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do that.
I can do that.
Can you do it? All right, 'cause I can take them all out too, okay.
And then... Right, and then I said the population would max out in twenty thirty-four with two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
Basically, and that's based on, you know, again, twenty-five homes a year overseas years.
Janet, we're gonna take action on this tonight, we're gonna vote to accept this, ours, is this gonna be thrown back to a workstation?
No, this is-
Go through it again?
We gotta get this so that we can get it for public hearing.
In the summer.
Yeah.
All right.
So, and there's just a little bit.
Okay.
There's only a couple more, one more.
Um, there's actually two more.
I didn't change any of-
The acreage part, chapter, then to chapter four?
I didn't change any of that because I thought it was, it was fine. I don't think we had any comments on that when we were going through it.
We got-
She's saying two thousand fifty-five acres? Thousand?
Huh?
Well-
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Lisa, who was it, was it Rachel that sent us the, remember we went to Rachel at G I S?
Yeah, she gave us the acreage.
Remaining for future development?
Yeah, she gave us the acreage, but it doesn't, it doesn't address the future development part. So I don't know how accurate that is, I'll just be honest, I don't know.
Well, why don't we just take all of this out and just say out of the total area of six thousand acres in the E T J and talk about the E T J? I mean, we've already said we have-
We could.
'Cause we've already said we're-
'Cause it's all zoned anyway, I mean, it's all zoned, it's not like-
Right, all right, well, I'll just delete that then. And then the only other comment was something about duplex houses.
Yeah, I know, a second.
Says encourage, that's on, uh, seven, it's actually eight, chapter eight, or-
Yes.
Point eight, goal eight. Encourage development of low density, single family, and it says, and duplex in appropriate zoned areas. And then it says, does one sixty consider duplexes to be single family residents?
That to me too.
But why do we, I mean, what's, why do we care? Actually, is duplex allowed on ours twenty or thirty? Well, that's- It's really not, right?
It's what, that's multifamily.
So we should delete duplex because encourage development of low density, single family.
Pick it out.
Right? Okay.
Pick it out.
All right. Okay, now with those changes, I guess I wanna make another motion to accept this land use plan with these discussed changes for our public hearing on December ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, I'll make the changes again and get it out. Thanks, Mary. Okay. Now, planning and zoning. Lisa, you're gonna have to help me here because I was keyed in on the ordinance thing, so.
Well, when we met at the work session, that special work session with Tasha, there were a few things that you would ask her to go back to the board and kind of look over again, which she did and made some tweaking. So she sent a revised, proposed changes, um, updated, excuse me, that was my voice, based on your comments of the eleventh of October. So what you see here-
Are we looking at red, the red?
Yeah, the red.
Okay, so for the playground equipment, residential playground, we said, um, included but not limited to swing sets, trampolines, sandboxes, jungle gyms, slides, similar equipment shall be placed, not, shall not be placed in front yards. Playground equipment is permissible in both the side and the backyard in all residential zoning districts. Equipment location must be all, must be all zoning.
Back and side.
Back and side setback requirements.
It shouldn't be back, it should be rear. Isn't it a rear setback, we don't call them a back-
Yeah, we don't call it back, we just-
Yeah, it's called a rear.
It should be rear.
Lisa, they accept all the recommendations we made. Send it back to them, is there anything that we, that they object to or that?
They don't object to us, we object to them.
Okay, that makes sense. So now the next thing is, do we have to go each one of these items, why can't? This is what we worked on in the workstation, the verbiage and stuff, we send to them and make the changes?
Yeah, we still have to go through them.
We have to go through each one to accept.
So we want, we are going-
Accepted document as it is, even though it's, we've already revised the document.
Uh, but you didn't accept these particular items?
These, these we didn't, we, we accepted some of theirs.
Some.
But then other ones we said no, we wanted to do it.
Revised since we sent it back the last time.
Since our work session.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what these are.
Yeah, Mary?
Yeah, under residential playground equipment, that last sentence probably should read, equipment location must meet all rear and side setback requirements. 'Cause it said, you don't need zoning, 'cause it, I mean, it's already, it's already in there.
All back and side.
Well, located in, so you don't wanna reference located in table or whatever?
Oh, no, I, all I'm saying is take out the word zoning. It should say, equipment location must meet all rear and side setback requirements located in that table.
Got it, okay. And, and we'll make those change, you'll make those changes.
I'll make those changes and if you accept this recommendation with those changes, then that, that'll be, be public hearing, okay?
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept this change.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, okay. Uh, the next one is, um-
Yeah, that's an easy one.
Add accessory buildings to municipal? And yes, we wanna do that, so that's, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept adding accessory buildings.
Okay.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Village Business District, okay, fences, this is one that, okay. Fences visible from public streets or which abut residential zoning shall be of wood, stone, brick, wrought iron, aluminum, powder coated aluminum, PVC or a combination of these materials in the decorative side of the fencing facing outward. Fences walls that abut non-residential zoning may be a vinyl coated chain link if screened with view obscuring plant materials not less than five feet tall at time of planting and reach the desired height within five years. Fences, walls, plantings or any combination shall result in a screen that obscures the view from the ground to the height of the object being screened or a maximum of six feet and shall be erected directly, shall be erected to directly screen donation boxes and similar facilities from public view. No maintenance equipment, dumpsters, donation boxes or similar facilities shall be kept in the open or exposed views from residential lots, streets or sidewalks. Okay. Dumpsters shall be completely enclosed with wood or synthetic product, i.e. Trex, resulting in a screen that obscures view from the ground to the height of the dumpster to a maximum of fifteen feet. And they, she's got some pictures there, all enclosed. All dumpsters, donation boxes or similar facilities shall be placed on a level impervious surface and impervious aprons shall be added to the entrance and exit of any driveway or parking lot where rock or sand or stone is used.
Okay, I got a question on number, on C.
Okay.
When it says an impervious apron shall be added, what's the width, what's the length, is there a minimum? We were talking about, like, the general store putting concrete or pavement or something, right? So are we gonna tell them how much they need to have?
I would say it would be the entrance to their parking, their width, the hole, whatever, whatever their drive is. Whatever their entrance is. Because they clearly have an entrance that is of stone or-
Right.
Sand. And that needs to be covered. So do we want to accept item number three, the village, in the Village Business District, these changes?
The recommendation.
The recommendation.
Can I also add to that, they, P and Z believes that all of these recommendations are consistent with the applicable elements of the village land use plan and a long range plan and reasonable and in the public interest in order to provide clear and consistent guidance to property owners. That's a statement that needs to be enclosed, no, no, that's good.
So Lisa, when you, it wouldn't, like, the general store owner isn't gonna get notice of this, is he? It's not like we're changing a zoning. You know, like, we, you know what I mean, we'd already five, everybody, everybody got a letter. Is he gonna get a letter about this or no? Probably not.
It'll be in the public, it'll be an item in the public hearing and it will be either accepted or rejected.
And if it's a-
No, no, that's, right, that's what I meant, but when we did R I five, every landowner got a letter.
That was a resounding yes.
Yeah, okay, so that's, okay, I just wanna be sure that's what you got there, okay.
In this, but I, I think I will.
Well, you know, one thing I have to, I guess I have to ask, because I'm not sure what the tech, how the tech, this is technically done, but any, any property that isn't compliant with these changes has to become compliant.
Well-
Well, no, that must be specified.
Well, don't we wanna specify that?
I would think maybe, yeah, some of the-
So we, we probably need to add a, need to add a statement that-
That's a, that's a discussion, though, yeah, that, that's a more detailed discussion than you might think. I'm not willing to make a decision on that tonight. Especially because it's been, I'm not saying it's good the way it is, but it's been that way forever.
Right, you can accept this recommendation, put it on the public hearing, and when you have the public hearing, you can make that addition or to it.
Check with Hornet in the-
Yeah, but we'll have time to talk to the attorney then, find out. I, I would think you could probably do it, but-
Well, I could, I know that they, when you look at laws that are written, they say it's, you know, effective immediately or you've got X number of years to comply with changes.
Well, kind of like with fencing after, I mean, if some of the fencing is falling down a certain percentage, then we won't, if it's non-compliant, we're not gonna let somebody build a solid fence. Because eighty percent of it fell down, what if, you know?
So then they have to bring it into code.
Right, exactly, so that, that would be, you know, longer grandfathered in. Yeah, I mean, I, there's a way to do it, but I think that we should give the attorney's advice and then we can make that change at the public hearing, as long as you accept the recommendation and move forward. You said.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so this proposed amendment to add a new section to the Foxfire Village U D O recreational district, actually, this is business district, I'm sorry, business district. Fencing and structure coverage is consistent with the applicable elements of Foxfire Village Land Use Plan and Long Range Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest in order to provide clear and consistent guidance to the property owners. So I'd like to make the motion that we, we accept these recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And basically, the recreation one, I think, is almost exactly the same. This proposed amendment to add a new section to the Foxfire Village U D O recreational district is consistent with applicable elements to the Foxfire Village Land Use Plan and Long Range Plan and is reasonable in the public interest in order to provide clear and consistent guidance to property owners. So, and this is basically new for the recreational district and it says, um, fences visible from streets or which will abut residential zoning shall be of wood, stone, brick, bi- aluminum, powder coated aluminum, PVC or a combination of these materials with the directive, with the decorative side of the fencing facing outward. Fences walls that abut non-residential zoning may be a vinyl coated chain link if, if screened with view obscuring plant materials not less than five feet tall at time of planting and reach the desired full height within five years. Fences, walls, plantings or any combination shall result in screen that obscures views from the ground to the height of the object being screened or a maximum height of six feet and shall be erected, directly screened, donation boxes, similar facilities. Do we need to have donation boxes in recreational?
I don't know. You think so?
I'm just covered, nobody goes to put one in there.
True.
Or similar facilities shall be kept in open or exposed views from residential lots, streets. Shall not be kept, no ma-, oh, no maintenance equipment. Dumpsters shall be kept in open or exposed views from residential lots, streets or sidewalks. Dumpsters shall be completely enclosed with wood or synthetic wood product resulting in a screen that obscures the view from the ground to the height of the dumpster to a maximum of fifteen feet. All dumpsters, donation boxes or similar facilities shall be placed on a level impervious surface. Impervious aprons shall be added to the entrance, exit of any driveway, parking lot where rock or sand or stone is used. And I have a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to accept this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion accepted. Okay. This item on modular homes, this proposed amendment to remove modular homes from definition, section of the U D O is consistent with applicable elements of the Foxfire Village Land Use Plan and Long Range Plan and is reasonable in the public interest in order to provide clear and consistent guidance to property owners. So basically, this is removing the definition of a modular home from our U D O.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last one. This proposed amendment to add detached garages to the U D O is consistent with the applicable elements of the Foxfire Village Land Use Plan and Long Range Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest to, in order to provide clear and consistent guidance to the property owners. Currently, U D O states that detached garages are not considered accessory buildings when the main structure has no garage. There is no further direction in the U D O for detached garages. Recommendation, recommending the following new section be added, which is detached garages may be placed on any single family lot where the residence does not have an existing garage, providing the following restrictions.
Give me worded. Providing the following restrictions doesn't make sense.
Well, I think, to me, one thing that I'd like to see is that, does, do we really care if the single family home has, if the home has an existing garage or not? You know?
I don't think it makes a difference.
I think we should allow it whether they have a garage or not.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Anyone have any comments on that? Well, let's move on. Garage shall match the primary residence in color and architectural design. Detached garage- Detached garages should be placed in the rear or side yard of the primary residence. Should that be shall instead of should?
Must be.
Because you don't want it in the front of the house.
Yeah, when you say should.
It should be, it should be shall. Be placed in the rear or side yard of the primary residence, and garage doors should be side-facing when feasible. Garage shall follow all the building and design standards in section 21610.2, and all building and height setbacks requirements as set forth in section 2168. My only, my only comment to detached garages in general is that I think we'd, I, I wouldn't care if they had a garage already or not, if it, if it was attached. Why not have a detached garage? I'd rather see a detached garage than cars all over the place.
I agree.
So, that's, that's- Here's gonna be my point. Somebody can say they're gonna build a detached garage and not use that, use it as a garage, okay? And what they're really gonna end up with is two accessory buildings on the lot.
Well, and again-
So I gotta tell you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in favor of giving people another detached. If they already have a garage, they have an accessory building, I'm just concerned that someone's gonna say, "I'm gonna build a detached garage," and they're not gonna use it to put cars in.
Well, the thing is, is that I don't really think a detached garage should be counted as an accessory building if they want to put a shed in. Because, again, I'd rather see a structure, especially if they have room for it, a structure versus stuff hanging around. So, having a tool, I don't think having a tool shed and a detached garage is the most unsightly thing in the world. That's just my feeling. So I, I kinda disagree with, with your thought on that.
And then the, the last work session we had, I think we discussed extensively, and I thought we came up to kind of an agreement that a detached garage would not be considered accessory building. What you're saying, whether or not we have a car, attached garage to your house.
Right, or if you had-
So that would, that would lie to have the two accessory buildings on the, on the side.
Yeah.
And I thought, I thought we had worked that out before, but I, I could be wrong.
So, that's just my comments on this.
Well, I, I agree with you. I think that we should allow another garage. If the guy's got a two-car garage, nice field pellet, and he's, he's got an old car that he's fixing all up, and he wants it stored inside, where's he gonna put it if he has another garage? So I think we should give him-
Are we gonna put any limit on the size?
I don't, I don't think we should, if, if you can, no, there are no limits on it. If there's, if there's, if you've got room to meet your setbacks in impervious surfaces, do we, do we care? It's a question. I, I don't think I care. Because it still has to match the appearance of the house. You know, it has to, you know, it has to be in the side or the back.
Like you said, it's better to have that than having a couple extra cars sitting outside all the time, too.
In my opinion, that's my opinion, but-
I agree. I think it should be allowed.
So, Jan, so what we need to do is change the ordinance right now?
We can, yeah. I guess, yeah, I mean, the only thing I wanted to change was that, where it says detached garages may be placed on any single-family lot where the residence does not have an existing garage, I think we should just say detached garages can be placed on any single-family lot. Regardless if they have a garage.
Could we do a board of adjustment where we denied a guy?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
Well, it was in the front.
That was, that was, it was towards the back and side of it. Maybe I'm thinking, I might be thinking about another, maybe I have to think of somebody else.
Yeah, this one was in the, in the front. Also, I'm not quite sure, I don't believe we have a definition. If we do, I'm not, I don't know if that needs to be added.
Can we limit, I, I just, I don't know, maybe I'm just looking at it completely differently. But if you already have a garage, and you want to have a detached garage, and you're on 30,000 square feet, do we need to limit the number, like, a single car, a one and a half, a two-car? And maybe that's too difficult.
Well, then you'd have to have different sizes for different lots and-
Well, that's exactly what we have in accessory buildings, but that's probably too complicated.
I just think if you can meet the setbacks, because if you've got a 30,000 square foot lot, you're gonna run out of space pretty quick for a 35C. Because you can only have, I mean, you still have to meet the setbacks.
The impervious.
Right, impervious surface.
Do we have a definition in there? I'm working right.
I can't. And then this is just to accept the recommendation.
Right.
Go ahead, and then all of these changes, I mentioned it could be at the public hearing, too.
And just, so, does not, so, let me ask you this. Can we vote on removing the language where it says whether the lot, where the lot does not have an existing garage?
Yes.
Do we, I'd like to make a motion to remove that language?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we're making a motion to accept the recommendation by, with removing this?
The lot where the resident does not have an existing garage.
And then the following- Shall.
Right, and detached garages shall be placed in the rear or side yard of the primary residence.
Do we need to put a definition in of what a detached garage is, because we don't have one?
Yeah, yeah, I do need to.
Can we add that at the public hearing?
Yes.
Well, can we just say that a detached garage is a garage intended to house vehicles? Limit it at that?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to get that detailed. Jeez, come on.
We can add the definition? Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept this recommendation for detached garages?
We just did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All in favor is, yes, we're moving, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because if they put their Christmas baked decorations in there, you know.
Alright. So we can get rid of, okay, so, this is done with the changes, so we can move to public hearing?
Yep.
So do I have to make a motion to move to public hearing on these?
Yeah, make a motion, yeah.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna make a motion that we move to public hearing on these, these changes to zoning?
Are we picking a date now?
Well, it's going into the December 10 public hearing.
Okay, so we already picked that?
Yes, this will be added to the planning and zoning changes for the public hearing on December 10.
Yeah, we planned it, okay.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay. Alright. Alright. That is the end of old business, and now we're moving on to public comments. So this is comments on items listed on the agenda.
Um, Rose and Juliana, two very interesting questions. Um, in regard to park rules, I'm not sure if I missed it, or maybe it was mentioned and I missed it. Um, I know you're gonna have some additional discussions, kind of put it all together. The park rules in regard to time, sunset to sundown, in the work session, there was talk about possibly having an allowance for special events or something like that. So, if there is additional discussion on that, I would appreciate if you would take into consideration allowing for a special permit for additional time, so we would not have to crowd in, say, the trunk or treat, which does carry over after, after sunset. And then something like movies in the park would also be impacted if we didn't have that as an option. So, just something that maybe you take into consideration.
That, that's already taken into consideration. It's, and you, I know you don't pay for the park when you have an event, but you've rented the park, so you already have that. Yes, so, anyone who rents the park or an FPOA event can go past the dusk.
Okay.
Do we put it, do we stay nine o'clock, do we put nine o'clock?
It's, yeah, 9:00 PM. And that, that will be written up, and we'll, we'll do it in an hour.
Okay, good, good. Um, in regard to the well, it's unfortunate, you know, that things are pushed back and whatnot. Um, in regard to contracts, is there an opportunity to kind of set forth some sort of a guideline for upcoming and contracts that would be written in the future, for example, even for the pool? If there was a contract that needs to be written, are there guidelines for, is there anyone who's actually doing some additional checking? I know you're talking about using the attorney to look at ordinances and things like that. Is that an opportunity to make sure that, you know, all the i's are dotted and the t's are forced in? So, something maybe to consider. And then, lastly, in regard to changing the time for the meetings, I understand the dilemma, and I understand, you know, the volunteer position and the fact that everybody is busy. It's just unfortunate that there's a large number of individuals who would show up, and granted, there are certain sessions that people are more interested in because everyone looks at things, and this is important to them, but maybe what's on the agenda the next week or whatever may not be. Um, it just seems that there's a large portion of the residents that are not gonna be taken into consideration, or their voices are not easily heard. Um, we have right now houses being sold that, and it's about, and I just did a quick look, over 50% are four-bedroom houses, so you've got families that are coming in, and those families may not necessarily be heard. If there was not an opportunity to move it, and I get the work sessions because they do go work, but if there was an opportunity for some of those workshop sessions to be then drafted out, the proposals, the information that was discussed, and to be posed in enough detail that an individual could download that information, read through it, and have a very good understanding of some of the things that were coming up, they would be more likely to go ahead and attend particular sessions that were important to them. But I feel like a lot of people are kind of blind to it. Um, I've taken a look at some of the packages and information that's available on the Whispering Pine site, and, you know, there's just so much that's out there. If you miss a session, you can take a look at everything and easily understand a lot of what's going on, you know, and I don't think the residents have that opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? No? Okay. No other further comments from the audience? Um, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 6:17.